Good afternoon, we'd like to now call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we thank you for this day, but we thank you for this opportunity to come together to prepare for the next fiscal year. Lord, please guide us as we go through this process and please allow us to have understanding, Father, that everyone is in this together. We're a community, we're a family, no one is trying to do anything that is unjust or untrue. Let everything that needs to be said be said and everything that needs to be revealed be revealed. And for all people to understand that when we said we put you first, we meant it, we will continue to operate that way. Just like we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to item three, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on our list. Is there anyone who would like to address the city council? Okay, if there is none, there are none, we will now move to item four, budget workshop. Discuss proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. Mr. Coos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna thank Allison for building my nice slide. Hey, and before we start, and we're gonna talk about a lot of different things, but just before we start, just off the top of your head, y'all got any questions or comments, just to kind of lay them out. I'm sure y'all have some comments or questions, we're gonna hit them, but sometimes I feel it's good if somebody says, hey, you have something, so they're talking, concentrate on the rest of it.
No, I was gonna say, so I do have a comment, so in this budget that you're about to present, you know, I've had a chance to go over with you. For those who are here, for those who are not here that may be watching it when it's posted, please understand that the same way that when we make decisions, we don't make decisions based off of just one piece of research. When we bring proposals and we bring things to you is because we ask staff to find a plethora of options and opportunities before one, before one selection is made. So, in the future, as we do these fiscal budgets and all these other things, when people keep jumping to conclusions of somebody did this, or somebody did that, it's, it's, it's okay for us to ask questions, that's our job, and this is what the presentation will entail. So, thank you.
So, you know, again, as we've talked about over the last few years, you know, our city budget consists of a variety of funds. Or usually, uh, the big one is, of course, is the general fund, which has the most flexibility. And then, of course, we have a number of those in there on the screen, I won't read all those, but, you know, the probably the most important one that we're gonna talk about tonight, I will say, at least a priority, is the water and sewer fund. So tonight, we're gonna concentrate on those two, the general fund and the water and sewer fund. But regardless of whether it's the general fund, water and sewer, whatever fund it is, again, back to some of this is repetitive, that we've reviewed this before, oh, we have revenues, expenditures, and reserves, so all the funds have that. But again, we're gonna go into the, our enterprise funds. Enterprise funds being mainly, it's restricted funding, but the revenue that we receive is, the majority of that is from user fees. Not about the vast majority. We, you know, if we get some funds in and we put it in the bank, we're gonna draw a little bit of interest, we may get a grant, something like that. But the vast majority of what we get is revenue fees, and that's what, that's how we get our user fees, I'm sorry, that's where we get our revenue. So, property tax does not go to pay for water and sewer sanitation, street sweeping specifically for the city of Orange. So again, property tax, no. And again, because talking to Adam, Public Works Director, Cheryl, our finance officer, just thought it was a priority that we kind of flip-flop this year, let's start talking about our enterprise funds. So, you know, we all get a utility bill here in the city, and it has a variety of things. Again, there are water, sewer sanitation, uh, street sweeper, and sales tax. We charge sales tax or collect sales tax on sanitation and the street sweep, not on water or sewer. And so, most of us get a bill like that, and I purposely made that like that since you can't read it, because if you're like me, you get a bill, hey, what's the bottom dollar, you pay it, and you just move on. And so, you know, I pay what I pay. I don't really understand it, and I tell you, I've learned a lot from the ladies who collect the bills, our utility clerks. Tell me about this, tell me about that. So, a minimum base bill, so if you come to Orange, you gotta sign up for utilities. So whether you use a minimum amount of money, uh, I'm sorry, water and sewer, that's minimum, will be a thousand gallons or less. Or even if you're on vacation for a month, and you're not even there, we charge you what they call a minimum bill or a base bill. And there's the charges, the first thousand gallons of water, we charge you eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Now, that, once you get past that base, it's only two dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand gallons. So, what is that, like, three, less than three cents a gallon? Again, the sewer, sewer, we have to treat, literally, we have to treat sewer. So that, you know, that's more expensive. Again, the sewer base is fifteen, uh, fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents for that first thousand gallons. After that, nine dollars and forty-nine cents per thousand. And we'll talk about winter average for sewer here in just a little bit. Street sweeper, a dollar twenty-two, waste management, you gotta use waste management. If you have one cart, it's twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. If you have a second cart, eighteen dollars seventy-seven. And then the sales tax, again, with street sweeping and sanitation, on this bill's two forty-six. So, a lot of y'all are like me, and you use more than just the minimum. So, this is actually my, uh, what I got charged for, for what I used between June and the middle of July. So again, come down to a water consumption. I used an additional six thousand gallons of water, so they charged me an additional sixteen dollars and fifty cents. I used more sewer, an additional five thousand gallons, but that's the winter average. So, you think about it, in the summer, like we're going now, some of us, we're washing cars, filling pools, or watering the lawn or plants. Well, we kind of figure if you use a gallon of water at your house, those through the tap through your head, that has to be treated. Well, in the summer, we know you're using a lot of stuff that's not going down into the sewer system. So, what we say, when, when are you most likely using the least amount of water? Most likely in December, January, and February, because you're not out doing those kind of things, watering, washing your car, those kind of things. So we say, what's the least amount of, uh, stuff to put down in our sewer system? And that's called the winter average. So regardless, in the summer, of how much water you're using, again, my example here, I use an additional six thousand gallons. I only get charged that winter average, which is a little less than that. So, just kind of point that out. Again, uh, if you will, sanitation, which includes, once a month, pick up, uh, from the grapple trucks. So that comes up to be a hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-six cents for me that month. And that's kind of what I pay. Again, many of us pay more than just a base bill. So what do you get, what do we have to use that for, that revenue for, for our water and sewer fund? Again, we showed you this last year and those kind of things. But the city's about to start growing, uh, four hundred something residential parcels that we, you know, obviously, they're all not gonna just happen tomorrow, but they're gonna start coming forward. And again, you can watch the news, read the paper here locally, stuff is breaking, so, water and sewer stuff. Also, I mentioned before, we have three grapple trucks, we do a route, so, you know, once a month, you can pick up, uh, put the limbs or the debris, and they'll pick that up, and no additional charge is in there. And also, the street sweeper that does some of the streets. And then there's waste management, again, once a week, put your cart out there, put two bulk items on the side, we'll pick those up. And so there's two trucks, you know, there's the, the old-fashioned, I call them, that's the bulk truck, they go by and they throw that stuff in there, and then that side loader comes afterwards and picks it up. If you have two cans, yes.
On that side before that grapple truck, I remember when we bought that third grapple truck, for, for a while, we were having issues, like with, I, I feel like we've definitely caught up, and we're ahead of the issues we used to see with, um, the usage of the grapple truck because of the three trucks. I mean, we don't see as many couches and trash and debris, you still have some. It's not like it was over a year ago, it was bad.
You know.
It's much cleaner, the city's much cleaner.
You know, I remember talking to Jamie Florence, and I think I told Adam this, because James works for Adam. But you know, talking to James, we talk about the grapple truck, where his guys would call and say, hey, I see this, it's not on our route. And, and James kind of tells them, it's like, you know, I'm not gonna get on you if you pick something up. I'm gonna get on you if you don't pick something up. So they're, they're, I think they're being a little bit more proactive. Hopefully though, too, that the citizens will say, hey, it's once, once a week, this is when I put stuff out in this pen. Now, I will say that grapple truck is supposed to be for customers, so then, as a resident, I put it out there. I, if you have a lot, and you're not a customer, you're not supposed, you're not supposed to be using the grapple truck. So it's supposed to be for customers.
You know, even on the east side, I used to be getting calls quite often, and I kept receiving calls, yeah, all of a sudden.
So, again, I think that's a credit to the citizens, a credit to the council approving that third truck. And, you know, it's been a couple of years since that H-word, so, you know, but I'm back.
Yeah, that's my saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't go there, don't go there.
So again, and I just want to remind you, so, you know, one of the things, waste management, they're a little, I think, they're a little too liberal on what they pick up, they pick up more than what they claim.
Man, they do.
They do.
If you put it by your can, they'll pick it up.
They don't pick it up. Now, please, everybody, God, just put on that no hazardous waste, don't put hazardous waste in your can or inside of it, they're not supposed to pick that up. So, again, in this budget that I gave y'all last week, we are gonna propose a rate, I'm gonna call it rate adjustment. Things never go down. But that will, if you took, take a look at our revenue, what we, uh, propose for the coming year is that we're gonna increase our revenue by half a million dollars. We're gonna talk about that in just a second. So, why do we need to, uh, go up? This is number one, we're gonna be in good company, cities, cities across Texas, everybody's increasing. I mean, look, just today and yesterday, Omaha had an oil water notice, Nederland had a, a, a pool water notice, it's happening everywhere. Again, I encourage you, if you're not doing it now, TML has a service, PML Connect News, and every day, they'll send you, uh, news articles that are, new stories from around the state. You don't even have to read them, but you can just look at the headlines, oil water, oil water, oil water. Wow, it's an Asian infrastructure. Again, we've talked about in the past where, uh, you know, it's at least, some of the areas of town, it's at least it's old, it's World War II, there's probably older areas too, so it's getting old. Sorry, when we start getting old, we start breaking down a little bit.
Well, I did put water in drinking pool.
They did. Yeah, so I'm not sure if they have a pool water notice or just a restriction, but yes.
They don't have a pool water.
They know that.
They do. So, it, and all happens all the time. And, and again, as we know, in the last year or two, you know, inflation has come back, so, this year, next year, to fix the problems, it'll cost more than it did a couple of years ago, just, just the fact of life. So it costs more to fix this stuff. And you know, so here's a couple of examples. I want to say this happened on Thanksgiving for some reason, but it happened on a holiday. So again, our guys can't say, oh, sorry, it's Thanksgiving, we'll see you Monday. They have to leave their families, they have to go out and fix that, and Thanksgiving.
It was Thanksgiving, I was there. Because I'm just trying to eat, do what I'm, and call it one out there.
Yes, so again, it costs more to fix that manpower on a holiday than it does Monday through Friday. You know, this one kind of hit me, because that goes down to the Y's. Now, now, again, that's not, those people in the back, that's not us, we're down there in the hole, the, the other guy there, we're working. I think that's energy looking, but anyway. And then also, this one at Green, another one of those, so, point of those three slides is, it's everywhere. It's not just one neighborhood, it's all throughout the city, so, and, and, you know, we could put dozens of.
Unfortunately, we're not looking for one. Some water pressure.
I got a water pressure, go ahead.
Oh, the one.
That's what we got fixed. So anyway, what do we propose as a rate adjustment? Again, back to that base bill. So the water base will go up from eleven fifty-seven to twelve thirty-two. No adjustment in sewer, unre, really unrelated to the water. You know, we're under a contract with waste management, and they can go up by contract, the CPI, uh, Consumer Price Index, and also the fuel charge. Well, we're gonna bring y'all, uh, here in a couple of weeks, a, uh, a proposal with them, where they only go up six and a half percent. Last year, they went up ten, they wanted to go up like fourteen, I think. Talking down to ten, they wanna go back up, so we're like, hey, what can we do, let's do something different. So that does reflect the six and a half. Not picking on anybody else, in case y'all say, oh, we're, we're, we're too much, we're not that. Very quickly, I, I asked a couple of people who use Piney Woods, and they're good folks at Piney Woods, I'm like, what do you pay for residential? Thirty-three dollars a month. So, again, you know, we're in line, we are, are under. But again, for a minimum base bill for a month, that's gonna go up less than three dollars, two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Last time I went down a glass of, uh, ice tea when I bought lunch, it was three bucks. Again, I, I get, three bucks is three bucks, at the end of the year, it's thirty-six dollars, but, but still, everything else is going up. You know, Allison went and took a picture of a gallon of water that they're selling in the stores, a dollar ninety-nine, not, not two for a dollar ninety-nine, a one for ninety-nine. So the proposal is, the water base is gonna go up an additional seventy-five cents. After that, the additional thousand gallons of water, eighteen cents. So again, what would my water bill look like? It'd go from one twenty-two thirty-six to one twenty-six twenty-one, that's three dollars and eighty-five cents a month, for, for an average person. Again, I like my money, I like to keep my money. I, and I hold off on three dollars and eighty-five cents. Tell Jill she has to drink one less Miller, I am. So, as, as, as proposed in the, uh, budget, what would that do for us? That's supposed to increase, uh, the charges for services to, uh, eight million five hundred thousand. And again, I got a slide later there, but we know, you know, uh, the budget is estimates and projections and all that. Do I think it's gonna be eight point five million dollars exactly? Of course not, but that's what we try to estimate. Again, there's a couple of those other little, uh, revenue streams that we have for this, but that's gonna give us a little over eight point eight million dollars of revenue. So how are we gonna spend that money in water and sewer? Well, there it is, broken down, you know, very big things, and we'll get into this a little bit more. But I'll take right there, you know, expenditures, nine point eight. So, I don't need Cheryl, the CPA, to tell me nine point eight is more than eight point eight. So let's move further and talk about our reserve fund. And those of you who've been with me here for a few years know that, and we gotta build up the reserve fund, because again, that word that we don't talk about starts with an H. You know, Lake Charles had that by two in a month, what, three years ago? So anyway, state law requires that we get twenty-five percent of operating expenditures in the reserve. Our own guidelines require thirty. CM, that's me, City Manager, I'd like to have fifty percent in all our funds or more. But what is the reserve fund for? It is for emergencies or capital projects, which is what we're gonna roll into this next slide here in just a second, after we look at the numbers. So for fiscal year twenty-four, it's gonna be eight point eight million dollars in expenditures. So at the end of twenty-three, which is the end of September, we're gonna have four million dollars, we estimate, four million dollars in the reserve. So we're, we're looking good. But as proposed, and we'll talk about here in just a second, we're gonna take that down to three million dollars. Because we need to do capital improvement projects, we need to do tons of, you know, remember, uh, we use our, all our ARCA funds, eight point two million dollars, we gave it almost all to water and sewer, and it's gone. We could put hundreds of millions of dollars probably into water and sewer, and we still would have problems. So, those of you who've been here the last couple of years, which saw y'all, probably heard, uh, Jim Wolf, me talk about Sunset Park project, both the sewer line bursting and the water line replacement. It kind of started as a smaller project and has kind of grown, and, uh, we're talking about it a little bit today during our grant meeting, which started as a grant, it's kind of grown from there, because we want to do, we want to try to go in there and fix stuff. Again, a challenge every community has is, you know, do you have enough money to actually fix it, or are you just gonna patch it? So after a while, I was like, we gotta start fixing some of this stuff, that's supposed to be patching. Because again, y'all get those calls, y'all see all that stuff, people are complaining, we go back to those slides with the water shooting, with the guys digging. So what we propose is to take funding out of the reserve fund for this, again, that's, that's a big number. But we need to do it, we can afford to do it. Now, some other capital expenses in water and sewer, I'll just be upfront, you can read those, especially sewer ops, water ops, meter readers. We could, let's see, I guess after quadruple, whatever those other words are, just, we could have ten times those amounts, and we'd still need more. Uh, we do wanna give another lease for a new grapple truck, replace an old one. But again, we always put money in there for, for cavins and water line repairs. Is that enough? No, it's not enough. But again, we're not getting five, ten million dollars to do all those different things. But we're, we're going where we can. Again, that's kind of where, we gotta kind of bite the bullet to get, uh, that, that water and sewer line project in, but they're, uh, sunset. So, water and sewer in the enterprise fund. Any questions, comments, concerns? We're gonna talk about general fund here in just a minute, but I just think this is so important, because if you think about it, the past year or two, or three, or four, um, when do we really get beat up on? Water and sewer. And, and we are in line with the other entities in Orange County. You know, I was pulling stuff off the internet, and I got some of them back there where, you know, and we're in line with, so.
Well, whenever you and I were talking, and I went and did some research on other local cities in southeast Texas, one of the other cities, I'm not gonna say their name, that is ours highs, for their additional thousand gallons is three twenty-five. And everybody says ours is so high, theirs is fifty cents more. So ours is definitely in line with everyone else's, if not lower. But what you have, but a lot of people have to understand that Orange is the biggest city in Orange County, but that's still only nineteen thousand people.
That, that's true.
We are not, we are not boneless.
Are we gonna, we gonna replace that one grapple truck?
We are.
Fifty thousand dollars.
That's, that's the least, now, that's the least, but yes. And, and again, as we go throughout, uh, whether it's that grapple truck, or whether it's, once we get to the general fund, again, I know if you're listening, we talked, uh, the page here, where, you know, a lot of this stuff, we want to, uh, replace, you know, we don't wanna replace all three grapple trucks the same year, so it's like, boom, let's do, which one needs replaced now? So again, if we come back next year or in two years, another grapple truck, like, well, we just did one. Well, we don't wanna get it where they all fall apart one day.
I agree.
Okay, here we go. So, let's review. All right, everybody's favorite topic, property values and tax rate, but we gotta have a talk about it again. Remember, the Orange County Appraisal District, they set the appraised value for all the entities in Orange County. So they're the ones that do it. And again, we're, I'm trying to talk about if you, uh, I think we do, I do, we get spoiled about the cost of living down here. It's, it's not as much as some other parts of the state, so we're, we're kind of spoiled. Uh, but the, the appraisal district sets the appraised values, not the tax rate.
I have a question about that. Um, who, I know they need to set, hey, the Trump Department, that, you, that, but who regulates that? Because I know some people, like mine, way more than double, like, more than triple, like the batting line. So, who regulates?
They have a board, they do, they have a board. And from what I heard, and I'm not sitting there saying this is correct, but I think also the state gives them some guidelines that they have to come in compliance with too.
We just reappointed someone last year.
Yeah, and we'll do that again, I think, fair up in this year, so. But again, I, I would, you know, specifics about the appraisal district and how they work, you know, there's their, uh, website right there. The next few slides, we'll get that information from that website. But yes, as I, what I understand, I do know they have a board that regulates them, like this, you know, this board. But also, they, from what I've heard, have not called them up, but the, but the state kind of gave them some guidelines, like for appraisals, or how to whack with the rest of the state, so.
I just thought it was, it was just kind of odd that, I know, usually, people go up a little bit at times, like, we go up maybe two dollars for, you know, um, on, on water and stuff, but to, to, to the extreme, uh, trip with it, we go up that.
Now, I understand your home state can only go up ten percent. Which, again, depending on what your house is, you know, still ten percent is ten percent. So, again, I have this from the appraisal district website, you know, you know, when somebody, um, now, I pay my taxes as part of my mortgage, but some people go at the end of the year, just pay one big fat check to the assessor, uh, Orange County Tax Assessor Collector. So they're like, man, I pay, I pay a lot of them taxes. Yes, I pay a lot of taxes today, I'm not going to deny that, I like to keep all my money. But anyway, we're not the only one who taxed property owners, the county, the port, the drainage district, and there's their, the last taxing, uh, I'm sorry, the last rates that they had on the appraisal district. So if these are not correct, imagine they may be adjusted for this coming fiscal year. Again, I'm not representing that, I'm just representing what I got from the appraisal district website. And then there's the school districts. So, combined tax rate, if you live, if you're a property owner in West Orange Coast School District, it's there, LCM is there, I didn't do all of them. So, we talked about home values, so, in the city of Orange, now that's all we're talking about in the city of Orange, the average taxable home value, I'd say that's what your house would sell for, or any of those things, the every, because we all, you could be, have a home set exemption, you could be over sixty-five, you could be disabled, you could have whatever your exemptions may be. For this year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which starts October first, the average taxable home value, hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. Yes, that is more than last year, more than two years ago, that's part of that as I went. In the budget for this year, the proposed tax rate is point seven five nine five. What we can control, the tax rate is going down, again, from seven eight three, the current year, to seven five nine five. So what would the average, uh, homeowner pay to the city? A thousand eight dollars and sixty cents, or eighty-four dollars and fifty, uh, and five cents, eighty-four dollars and five cents a month. And again, you know, most of us probably carry around a cell phone that costs us more than that. Do I like to pay eighty-four dollars to the city? I don't, I mean, I, you know, we all like to keep our money, we all like, you know. But what do we get for that? So what does the staff and I do so that when people pay their tax dollars, we're like, well, at least I'm getting something for them? Here's a list, we're gonna go down, because again, water and sewer is not in there, so none of the, our property tax goes to them. Police department, again, there's seven out there, and next year, we actually get three hundred sixty-six days, because next year's a weak year, so, in next year, babe. We have seven patrol officers, two dispatchers out there every day, again, Christmas, two AM, weekends, when it's a hundred fifteen degrees outside, whether, whether it's twenty-five degrees outside, somebody's always out there. And we also have our detectives and our products, folks. Again, if the city of Orange was not here, poof, you just removed it. The sheriff's office, we put an additional seven people there, of course not, they don't have a revenue. The fire department, at three stations, we are the only professional fire department in this, in the county of Orange. All of our guys are EMTs, we got. Yep. Uh, we have the fire marshal, and then our ISO rating is such that it helps us on our homeowners insurance. The library, right next door, uh, what did Allison call it, the li, allow the library, because there's always stuff going on in there. And I'm very proud of our library. Parks and rec, you know, seventeen city parks, just recently, what, last year, we finally opened up the, uh, rec center. We got the Cove Recreation Area, that's going gangbusters, you know, what, two months ago, or three months ago. We got the Cove Recreation Area that's going gangbusters, you know, what, two months ago, three months ago? We had 30,000 people at our boat ramp beside the pavilion, a lot of cool stuff. And we put the orange in Orange County, planning community development. And again, let's think about, just recently, if you've driven down Mary's House, you know, look at demolition, who, who does that? Well, one, we're paying for the, the apartment demolition and they're cleaning that up. What we do, our people go and enforce the codes, we go through all that legal portion, uh, portion so that people do that. And also, as these new businesses, these new homes are coming, we ensure that those codes are being followed so that our police, specifically more though they get fired upon us, you know what, they don't have to do fires like they did back in the day because the code, the building code's unimproved. And so, again, with everything that's coming in these next four or five years, it's Kevin and his department, they're the ones that think, what's it going to look like when there are all those 5,000 workers are gone? 5,000 plus, I can say. So are we still having a city that we can be proud of once that project is completed?
And I want to thank y'all for what all of you city step are doing in my part of town because it's amazing. It's an amazing difference and I do want to thank you.
And then the trees were harmed.
Yes, no tree for, for sacrifice in that project.
So here's something, the base complaint about this month is rain. We'd like to, uh, not complain, but we would use some, some rain, get some drains. But they maintain our streets stormwater, and stormwater is literally water from a storm, rainwater, as opposed to wastewater, which is again, is sewage. But then again, we also have the only pump station in Orange County, there Cooper's going. So let's get a little bit, talk about what we, what we've got on the budget for the general fund. So again, you know, you got that time charter. So this is the revenue. And let me, again, IDC, industrial district contracts, I call them industrial district agreements. Currently, we get 37% of our revenue. And I, I don't, I want to continue to tell you to keep in mind that our current IDA, our best, current IDA, industrial district agreement is due to expire in 2027.
I'll be telling you where you can lay the groundwork.
You know, well, no, well, if your reference, seeing that, uh, the, uh, that lunch a couple of months ago, supposed to have with one of the plant managers, she canceled that, we have it Thursday. But I'll, again, remind you that the state legislature passed Senate Bill 2038, which states if some, if any, someone petitions to be removed from our EPJ. I guess we have to allow.
That's right, and what's the Senate bill?
2038, I sent that to y'all in three sep- in three separate emails, so I sent that to y'all. I leave a little synopsis, I should say.
Well, we also have the option to annex them.
No, sure.
Can annex, can we roll?
One, the, uh, the IDAs specifically, so we don't, that, that's what it is, it's, it's an, you know, agreement, not the annex. But then, again, the state has done it such that really all you can do is frame the annexation. Now, there's another state legislative session scheduled in 2025, of course. We'll see. On, on cheerier things, I'll strike your attention to the sales tax piece, which is why it's so important to shop local so that if we can grow the sales tax portion, we can reduce theoretically with the property tax portion. So shop local. So where's all that money go? And there it is, just a dollar, but I'm sorry, and I swear it's going, how do we get it? So again, there's that 10.8 million dollars from the IDC's, property tax, a little over nine, sales tax, minus the entire 6.8. So all together, just over 29 million. How are we going to spend it? Again, you know, a lot of what we do is services, that takes people. 63% of our expenditure is going to go to personnel. Again, I would say that's not a bad ratio for a city. Uh, school districts have a lot higher. Last time I looked at one, it was like maybe up to 80%, I don't remember what school district it was. But you know, always been told if you can keep it around 75 or below, we can do it. So we're going to talk a little bit, there's the numbers. Okay, so highlights and some of new stuff. And, and again, some of the highlights, because, you know, this, this budget, there's not a lot of stuff to say, oh, that's new. We're doing a lot of stuff already, we kept it in there. So for instance, the adopt a spot for 35,000, looks at the library at 20,000. We are, we're meeting a new truck to lease. Again, if y'all got any questions about this, let me know. Animal control needs a new truck, so they want a slide-in animal containment unit. So also.
Cube. They're not cube.
No, nothing, nothing's cube. Street drainage, the, uh, the T-Rex hydraulic, airhead hammer, that's a big old jack. And here's going to be something that we need to discuss a little bit, don't necessarily need to make a decision tonight. We put in $400,000 for street rehabilitation. You know, when this, again, when this process starts and this kind of review, you know, we start this thing like in April, May. And so Cheryl tells all the department heads, hey, get, get your numbers together, start getting estimates, what you want, what you need. And then we start to talk. Of course, this year's been a little crazy, this summer, because, you know, we kind of planned out when the, uh, state legislature ends at the end of May, then, you know, we can start saying, okay, did they do anything crazy to us? Being, us being the cities? Well, this year they kept doing special sessions, so we're waiting, we're waiting. And then we don't get our certified property values till the end of July, July 25th, 25th? So that's when we really know what we're going to get. So in the meantime, we, we tell the department heads, hey, let's talk about what you want, what you need. So we try to always give them, you know, try to fulfill as best we can what they need, try to give them a little bit of what they want. Well, you know, street rehabilitation, talk to Adam, talk to Mike Markin tell, what's some of the votes that we've heard from people? Uh, what is some that Mike, as the, uh, street drainage department, not department head, but division manager, what has he seen? So here's a list of some of these streets. Well, they're expensive. They only get more expensive. So after we had a list and all the different department heads tell us what they want, and we kind of take from, a little bit from everybody, everybody doesn't get everything, it's down to $400,000 for street rehabilitation. So what we propose is coming to the council on a later date, keep, keep the $400,000 in the budget. And then say, okay, let's, let's cuss and discuss which street's going to get it. You know, for instance, West Alley Pan, that's going to be a million dollars. There's no need, again, we say it again this summer, till they finish out that subdivision that's going on, there's no need to do it. So, you know, it's going to be a tough discussion, but we'll, we'll do that. But we have the $400,000 in the proposed budget. Some more highlights, again, back to, this has been there for a while, $195,000 for demolitions. Now, the Sabine Park apartment, section four is coming out of reserve, some of those you don't authorize, under. But still, all those other houses that we did, comes out of there, mowing, $90,000. Couple of payments, you know, doing all this, uh, different software, so we're paying that out. Fire, uh, so turnout gear, that's a big number. But unfortunately, there's been some requirements on the fire department to have two sets of gear. And then, so we need to get new gear, all this stuff. Now, of course, what we want to, uh, get away from is that the next several years, apparently this gear, you know, could get torn and worn and those kind of things. But if it just sits there in the vehicle, it's good for 10 years. So of course, we're not going to wait 10 years and then replace all 33 cents. We're going to get the 33 cents, but then in several years, again, understanding some will get worn and torn, but then we'll start coming, just like the grapple truck, or all three, or at least all three the same year, it's, start getting it in as a rotation. Some other things that they need to, certainly have any questions about these, please ask?
Well, I just, I'll just say that when it comes to anything, to make sure that lives are being protected and that's not, no brain in it.
And, and you know, you know, especially, well, I'm not going to say especially police and fire, but you know, our, our public works groups and, you know, a lot of them, a lot of different things. Also, you know, the state or the feds will say, here's some new guidelines, you got to do something differently. Or, and we'll talk about, uh, like the police, now that the, the district attorney's going to say, you have to record your interviews at a certain standard. So, you know, we all have to upgrade things. Building services, let me point out, you know, City Hall, called the new City Hall. When we bought that, we, we bought the old, uh, AC. It's just given us fits and problems and all those things. So, uh, what we have proposed to do is to take $85,000 out of the general fund, but then $85,000 from the EDC and the CVP each contribute $85,000. That's, that's legit because they're housed at City Hall. And so that's how we're going to get the new AC boiler controls for City Hall. There's a couple of other upgrades there, but you read those. Any questions? Some park maintenance. So, you know, so, I like restrooms at city parks. As I said, I like restrooms everywhere, but, uh, we certainly need multiple ones. Start replacing the old ones, once again, can't do them all. So what we have in this budget is about $110,000 for a new restroom. Whether we, whether we want to put that in Navy Park. If y'all want to decide to put it somewhere else, I'll let y'all guide us on that. Additionally, you know, some kudos to Dow a couple of years ago. You know, they, they came up to us and said, look, for the next three years, we're going to donate y'all some money. If y'all donate some money, we'll be doing it. And, uh, cool things are happening out there in the Cove Rec area. Kind of take a look at those.
People in the Cove are excited about that part too.
That part, it looks cool. So that's kind of a capital out there, so general fund highlights included in the, again, in the proposed budget. Two, uh, across-the-board ratings, 3.5% for all the employees. That's going to cost approximately $350,000. In this budget, there are no new positions, no regrading of any positions. Also a reminder, we're entering year three of a three-year CBA with both the police and the fire. Of course, those are two second CBAs. But they will, so this time next year, we'll be discussing CBAs with those folks. Additionally, through the budget, uh, the Texas, Texas municipal retirement system contributions has increased an additional $175,000. The city property insurance is going to increase approximately $141,000. That's literally on our buildings, RV, those kind of things. So we already see some big increases from the across-the-board ratings, TMRS, property insurance. Insurance for the employees, we project a 12% increase with Blue Cross Blue Shield. That could go down a little bit, and what that means to the bottom line, $364,000. That could drop a little bit, Blue Cross and Blue Shield's trying to get our development vision, our consultant said that if they're competitive and, and if they kind of bundle that, that might go down. It's not going down a bunch, but say maybe, I'm just guessing, it may go from 12 to 11, something like that.
How do you, uh, do you know what it is with other companies coming in instead of this one with, what they increase to?
I don't recall the last time we went out, we used to get with the consultant, do you remember last time?
It's, yeah, well, you're not leaving. So things kind of are represented quite a bit. Uh, maybe, maybe just see if there's somebody else out there to give something.
Yeah, if you can, I would say though, historically, unfortunately, 12% is not that much, so. Now, I like, I don't like to pay the 12%. And I do recognize, I want to say, you know, I'll, I'll speak for most of the employees here, we appreciate sticking with one company so that we don't have to try to change. So we think there's somebody that would stay on the Blue Cross Blue Shield. As opposed to going somewhere else and all sorts of, man, that wasn't what they thought. Or what commonly could happen is like, hey, he signed a three-year contract with us, and the next thing you know is like, yeah, they got in that first year, then they split.
Then they went up.
So, so, some of that is the value of the service that they provide. Now, as you recall, you know, the city currently pays 100% of the employee's health insurance at a $3,000 deductible. An employee can elect to go down to the $2,000 or to the $1,000 level. Also, currently, the city pays 90% of the employee's dependent coverage, regardless of that deductible. We kind of call it the 90-10 split. In this budget, I propose that we, we start to shift that, because again, we're looking ahead, 2027. And going from 90-10 to 87-5-12. With the ultimate goal, you know, given four years going to 80-20, which is still a very attractive policy compared to other entities around. County does 60%, West Orange does 50, other ones do other ones. But I haven't found anybody that does 90%. So, and we talked about revenue, we talked about expenditures, active reserve. For 2024, we estimate that our operating reserves can be $29 million. The expenditures, I'm sorry about that. Operating expenditures, 29 million. Do what?
I wish we had 29 million in reserve.
Yeah, no kidding. We estimate at the end of this fiscal year, which again, is the end of, end of September, almost 17 million. We project at the end of 2024, it's going to be about 17 million. Now, you know, in the last couple of years, I said, let's spend that back. Because again, under Mike's comfort level, 29 million, just to make it easy, let's just say 30, because I can divide 30 by two easier than 29. But if we said, hey, let's have 15 million dollars in reserve, so I say, let's spend that down some. But again, I'm going to say, in four years, when that IDA is going to expire, and you don't know what's going to replace it, if anything, you know, how are we going to get 10.8 million dollars? So I say, you know, let's not spend it then. Let's keep it where it is and not try to increase it over that several years. So, I'm kind of up here, just kind of wrapping up to the, but we're going to have a public hearing Tuesday, April 29th, so in two weeks. We got a regular council meeting next week. So next, in two weeks, at 5:30, there will be a public hearing on the budget and the tax rates. And as a reminder, in the budget, proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024 is .7595. Our current tax rate for fiscal year 2023 is .7830. That is a decrease in the tax rate, decrease in the tax rate. I cannot say in your piece of property that you own, that the property tax that you have to pay went up or down. I will say that after that slide way back when, the average homeowner will be paying more property tax. But we decreased our tax rate. So with that, questions, comments? You know, with, with the, uh, the timeline that we have, I'm going to go back to this timeline. You know, if you, I know you got the budget last week, a couple of y'all had some questions, uh, you know, there might be some questions coming out tonight. But I'll, I'll tell you, you know, Cheryl and I can sit there and say, okay, we need to know sooner rather than later. Questions, concerns, because she has to do all her things and compute all that stuff and literally, come up with the ordinance and print the books and all those kind of things. So if you've got something on your mind, please, you know, just let us know. I want to start your running address up there. I mean, how are y'all going to do it? Got something?
I don't know.
Have any questions?
No, I'll read you later. Whenever I can see an unusual one, a failure one. No sign to work.
A lot of work in this book, a lot of thought, a lot of vision for the future, so to make Orange the best it can be, so thank you.
I don't have anything to add.
Simple question, your thought process of, of the thought process of the, uh, 10 million loss, uh, 2 million loss loss in 2020? Simple question, your thought process, uh, the thought process of the, uh, ten million long, uh, ten million dollar cost in twenty twenty-seven, you would make it through one more year, but then what happens next year, what's your thought process?
Sit here with y'all and say, it's, it's tough decisions to be made. Because again.
I mean, it's, I've been thinking about what you told me, and there, there's, at that point, you're safe for one year, and then.
And you know, with, and I'm talking, Brad came in one day, a couple of weeks ago, and anybody's welcome to come in, appreciate that. I said, and again, just because I know Brad has, you know, businessman has a store, I said, this is the way I look at it, just so y'all know what, you know, he mentioned. Brad, you gotta have the same store, you gotta pay the same amount of money, you gotta pay the same, you know, number of employees, you got about the same thing. Everything's the same that you have to do, but you make a third less money. Or not doing third less work, you make a third less money. So that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a challenge.
The state doesn't bid it, something, it's gonna be close.
It's gonna be a challenging challenge. So that's why, you know, the mayor and I were talking the other day, where, you know, and somebody will say, don't y'all plan ahead? Try to plan ahead.
You just don't know, it's just like a hurricane, I mean, you couldn't hurt, could not, you just, you just don't know.
Well, the same time, uh, Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight passed.
Yeah, it needs to be changed in the mayor's legislature.
You, you know, again, and.
I think that's politics.
Well, I don't wanna steal the mayor's thunder, but again, uh, but he reaffirmed what our, our council said when, uh, we started meeting, the staff meeting, the guy was there, and he said, let's just, you know, his opening statement was, there are people at the state legislature who hate cities, and I mentioned that to the mayor, he's like, yeah, because he's one of the T M L boards, and he's still at the state level.
These are the guys that work with him every day, and they say the same thing. The people that we vote for sometimes do not represent us in any way.
And again, I like the thing, we're a good city, you know, we're not perfect, but, you know, if one keeps in mind, if you think about central Texas, like I say, from Dallas, Fort Worth, come down, Austin, San Antonio, to make it, you know, triangle with Houston and on up, central Texas with all those people, you know, but what they're fighting about, if you will, or whatever, their concerns with one another, cities and state, I don't think it's the same here, sure, we, we have some concerns with our state or, you know, I don't think it's like them, though. But maybe somebody from the outside looking in said, you know, y'all have the center of sins, I just, I don't see it, I like, I like those folks.
Well, I, I straight up, I'm sure saying, but. But, but, I was, we talked about never made it out of, kind of.
That was a different bill, but again, twenty thirty-eight, you know, did. At least when we come back.
The animal state legislature will work your hand.
So if there's no one else has anything, then I'll, I'll say it before, um.
This is public here.
Yeah, for anybody, is there anybody in the, in the public that'd like to say anything before I finish it out? Anybody from staff? Go about, right?
Wow.
Right on. So what I'll say is, um, I, the one thing that I won't ask for us to bring back, uh, because I know we have to have so many meetings of it being brought forth, right, before it can be passed. So I've had several people that reached out to me, of course, from across everywhere, um, the, the insurance with ninety-ten versus eighty-seven and a half, twelve and a half, I would like to see us stay at ninety-ten, and here's, here's my thing on that. What I want to say to those who are here, and I hope you go back to your respective departments and repeat what I said. If you can't repeat what I said, we can watch it on YouTube, and they can probably come to your department, with Mike, of course, to address it. When Mike says we're looking ahead, we don't know what's about to happen. So when I ask him to give us numbers, it's because if we can't make decisions without knowing what are the possibilities. So before we have some drastic measure, where that insurance goes from ninety-ten to fifty-fifty or sixty-forty, I just wanted to see what those numbers would be if we made a slight adjustment. Now, that sent a shockwave through the city staff, y'all are screwing us, man, this is ridiculous, I'm gonna leave. If, if, if we are not allowed to ask questions, then what are we here for? We're here to ask questions. We saw what it looked like, I personally don't like it, I know other people here have talked to me, they don't like it, but it's just a way to see if we had to start making decisions differently than the past, how would it affect us and how would it affect you? Now, one of the other good signs of that is, I heard from some people who said, you know, this is what has made other employees from cities come here. They say, man, it's crazy what y'all give. That made me feel good, because it lets us know that we are, we are providing a good source.
That's a fact.
Yes, so if we keep it at ninety-ten, I would rather keep it at ninety-ten, make those adjustments. However, what I want staff to understand is, if when we get to that point, if it happens, no one can say we did not look into it. If you do, I'm gonna call you a bold-faced liar, because I'm putting it out here right now, we looked into it, people didn't like it, we didn't like it either, so we stay at ninety-ten, and this comes about in a few years, and it's a drastic change, you cannot say we did not try. We did not look into it, okay? Uh, another thing is, there was other things that came about through this, uh, budget, and like Miss McKenna said, lots of work. Thank you for everyone involved in reading this book, thank you to all the staff. Of course, every time we do this, there's rumors and things that people say about certain people. Look, I'm, I'm gonna tell you this, and he didn't even, I was gonna say this, Mike, Mike has, how long you been with us, Mike?
Four years.
Mike has never asked for a damn raise. He ain't never asked me for one, I'm just saying, no, just let me finish, I gotta get the mic on this one. Mike has never asked for a raise, and then everybody's like, he gave himself a raise. No, he didn't, no, he didn't. He can't give himself a raise, we have to give it to him. So with as much work as we do, we put y'all first, and we say we're gonna do all of this, and then as soon as the book comes out, everybody asks, like, we don't know each other no more. I'm ashamed, because we need to be better than that. We're all working together, we're all trying to make the city better, it's not always gonna be what we want it to be, but we're trying. It's bored up here, even though we may not always get along, I ain't gonna lie, some of y'all get on my nerves. But we, I'm just joking, I mean, it just happens, but we're all working to make it better. This, this, uh, I get six dollars a day, they get three dollars a day, something like that, right, a hundred dollars a month. So this ain't for us to get anything off of, and we really care, so let's make the adjustment, go back to ninety-ten, get those numbers, if, if that's what everyone else would like to see, if not, it is what it is, but let's keep it at ninety-ten, it's what keeps us whole and shows our employees that we care, and we are going above the rest, and if we get to that point, and it's drastic, at least they knew we, we looked into it.
That's it.
Couple comments?
Yep, go ahead.
Because again, and I'm gonna say this, because y'all, I was reading an article in the Port Arthur News, I wanna say it was their public works director, I don't pay for the Port Arthur News, so I couldn't find it again, uh, but, you know, one of their staff members talking to their council about their infrastructure, and he is saying, hey, it, it's not the council's fault, I blame staff in the past, because they did bring these things to the mayor's and the council attention. So, you know, I'm like, you know what, I like that, so, so I'm gonna say a couple of comments if I may. So what we proposed with the health insurance, about going from ninety-ten to eighty-seven point five, twelve and a half, at the, at the proposed rate that is going to increase, that would save us seventy-five thousand dollars this fiscal year, come twenty twenty-four. So if over the next four years, again, so we keep doing that shift down to April twenty, just in the four years, and if the insurance really kind of stays stable, that'd save us seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So again, go back to that slide about the streets. And, and this is, this is one of the things that's in our control, we can't control with property insurance, we can't control raise values, but we can't control that. So again, I don't want in a few years to say, why didn't you tell us? So again. I'm telling you. Again, and also to be clear, thank you, those kind of words that you said about, but I have made, uh, you know, whatever across-the-board raise.
Right, but you didn't ask, but you didn't come in and say, hey, I want more money. You got the coda like everybody else, but you didn't come in and say, give me this.
Well, I will say, and everybody, I'll just, I keep my back to everybody, and I said to people in the audience, but I've had other people say, I've never had a raise, or every year, except for, when it was twelve years ago, when they, whenever it was, every, uh, there was one year the city didn't do any kind of coda, but every year, it's on a period, a good penny, that's a raise. If you give it two percent, or whatever it is, after, you know, I've had jobs where, hey, you just don't get raises. So hopefully, you know, I'll speak for all of us, saying thank you.
I think it's wonderful, if you, if you really look at the big picture of all we have came back from, just a few years ago, being devastated by things that changed everyone's life, to be able to have a complete budget, continue to keep every employee to not have to make any changes, except for a little bit in the water and sewer, which is an enterprise fund, and for all of that to work, and we still be able to give a two-and-a-half percent raise without hurting anyone, I think that is a great job by everyone who put this together. Thank you. Cheryl, great Cheryl. Well, I'm scared to thank Cheryl, but Cheryl's like, quit thanking me, y'all, I don't wanna hear any mad at me. But it's, I know everyone, everyone that put something in on this book, thank y'all. Thank you. All right, that's it, so. Yeah, anybody else wanna say something? All right, if not, then, uh, we will, I have a, do I have a, shoot to adjourn? Get out those fans, push it in the second, only baby say aye, getting adjourned, thank y'all.